The meeting of the City of Hollywood Planning Board is now called to order. I am your Chair Chris Sellers, joined by my colleagues on the board Mark Paul, where this is going to be our, and as well as our council and planning staff. Three items that were mentioned before. The first is a conditional use permit. CFP number 007151 Marshall Street. Need northward? Yes. Need northward. Come on down. So we're looking at a conversion of the disney dwelling. Single unit detached since we're building two units. And it's again, conditional use permit, first time on our agenda. Ten minutes.
Yes.
Ten minutes to present, don't feel obligated to use the entire ten. But this was also a next action from the Hollywood County Planning Board, which I believe they refer to us.
Correct.
It's our action. Because we're looking to, based on that point, thank you. That was excellent. Thank you very much. My presentation today is just to preface the one recent number of questions for one Marshall. Part of the, uh, so this is the private location, and it's right next to the private council. Jason Bill. Obviously, I do have edits part of it. I would say, um, I have a map over there showing the house, the stars. Right five on the road. It's all. The conditional use permit, uh, for I think one is to the second floor. Uh, you know, the second floor is about eight hundred and four. As the, uh, yeah, the second floor is. Over the, uh, the location of the garbage. It is between the five, I'll be there for it. The garbage is stored in the counter, and also the egress is somewhat bigger. One on the side, and then also the main. On the front, so that's perfect space on the street. He's ready for it, too. That's great. And it's the same floor, I think, that's the second floor. So more than that, she read along the situation. And then the other back door. Also, that, the stairways, said we need to try, like, outside this room. I say one point, I think, out, it goes to the two. Exit with very big amount of units. On thirty six floor. This is the huge one, each other's there. The belief that, uh, making this issue better, like, set. In the states, the second floor would be very much a piece of, that should.
People that talk to me. So what is this space when you're going to the team? That doesn't answer the problem there. Okay. I'm walking. I don't know something. Okay, no, because I see the doors, the people, the doors, if coming from the other way, that's why it's asking.
So the access entrance can be. Do it from there. From the right side, that's going to be the first. Wait for it. It's into. Now, this is. So the main entrance coming. First floor, this place. For this, the main entrance comes to this one. Yes.
Okay. Now, do both, both apartments have a secondary egress? This is the bottom.
Correct. What is, so if you press, press the. They all have. There's also point access also. Any additional questions? Good. So.
Um. The one thing we'd like to call out, we did evaluate the support per the use specific standards of the conversion, and it does meet all those. There would be one point to be made that, the apartment, the total proposed number of dwelling units is two, and it could not exceed more than two, as that's the maximum number of units allowed. However, online real estate listing states that there may be a possibility of owner converting a basement to a third unit with proper permits. And we just want to clarify that that is not the case in this zoning district for this property. This property is called, is categorized as a dwelling, uh, unit detached, and it would, if it was to convert, would be a two-unit detached. That is the maximum number of units for this property. That's all.
Council, good?
Good.
All right. So we've been on a consideration tonight, it's to approve the conditional use permit. Call for a motion? Move by, this is going to be our, the second, I want all to approve the conditional use permit for fifty one Marshall Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For those that oppose, no one says. Next up, we have another conditional use permit, number zero zero seven two one six seven Merle Avenue. And, and on that school. So you want to convert three thousand eight hundred twenty-five square feet of townhouse, increase the total number of dwell minutes from two to three. This is also your, uh, first apparent, our actions tonight are, are to look at this conditional use permit, unbelievable, super action, even. Or not, I should say. We've got a ten minute. Comment, show of yours, ten minutes. Let's see everyone, yeah? Uh, so, we are looking at, thank you very much. I'm gonna just run through the building slides really quick, then familiarize you with the building, and then we'll look at plans, and I'll mention why I think this is the valid basis, and it's all the criteria. So this is the property on Merle Avenue. Uh, it's a two-and-a-half-story, uh, detached townhouse, uh, right across from the At Hudson Park and King Old Brewery site that's been converted into multifamily. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please. Well, this is a site plan, just so people could see, um, relative details here are the property line on the left and right, uh, on the, or I should say really the, the east and west. If you're facing the building, uh, the right side, the east side of the property line, there is a thirty-one foot, sorry, thirty-one inch, um, space between where the building ends and the property line ends, which keeps space for, uh, storage of trash behind an already existing, uh, fence. On the, uh, west, left side of your basic building, uh, you have a much larger space, it's a larger-than-typical pack slot, uh, which may be relevant to discussion at present, it's behind the fence, uh, out of sight, but there is some space on that left side that I want to point out, uh, if you go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This is our proposed unit floor plan. So the first and second floor, uh, are existing, uh, dwelling units. Um, there are minimal modifications, the third, the golden permits hold, because those are valid existing units. So that work is under progress, the garden level, which has not been touched yet, is ending this process. And that's really what we're looking at today. Um, what we've proposed is to add an exterior stairwell, um, underneath the existing stairwell to the first floor. Uh, it's at a little bit less than a half a grade down. Um, you can put the ingress on the left side, the west side of the building. Um, there's very high, uh, windows on the front of the building, which we'll see on some of the photos in a little bit. Um, so we'd be able to utilize those for a nice sunny, um, bedroom in the front. And it's very similar to what we proposed with other floor plans, uh, in other townhouses in the city. Like that here, common area, the living room, kitchen, bathroom towards the rear, office. This one is a little different than, uh, for example, the one we put forward for sixty-one Dana, uh, in the Park South, they're hurt because, um, it's on slight hill. So there's a, there's a very slight grade, it's in the rear of the property. Um, you can't exit out flat, you have to go off a stairwell to achieve the egress, which is already an existing stairwell that's in place now. Um, so you'll see that the egress for all of the floors is through a door on the first floor, which actually exits at, at grade in the rear and not on, because it's on a slight hill. If you go to the next slide, uh, well, this is just to show that we meet the criteria for being, uh, over fifty percent above, uh, grade. So, you know, the windows, line, uh, is, is more than fifty percent of the, the height of that basement floor. So this is not, uh, a space where they're going to be going, you know, deep down, that's the goal of any one of the important criteria for this sub-conditional use permit, is that we're not granting heat once basements, these are true garden level units that we're looking for. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. So here is where we illustrated that grade, you have a slight grade on the rear of the property. And so the back of the basement, there is enough room for still some windows for light, but we're not looking to get two bedrooms, we're looking to do one bedroom, we'll have a small office in the back for storage, really more extended closet, depending on the user, uh, on the tenant. But, uh, we're, we are able to achieve windows all the way through the property, uh, on the, you know, left and right side of the building. Uh, not in the rear though, because the rear, the back of that building is, is below grade. Um, so because of that, you can see that slant on the bottom, and I have some photos, I have to go straight that, best we could. Um, interrupt me if I'm going too fast on anything. Um, so there's the windows in the front, you can see these are even higher than, than other ones that we've, uh, recently, uh, received approval for from this board. Um, and actually, uh, I had a conversation with, with planning staff, heard it today about, um, you know, this obviously possibly, not possibly, more than likely, needs to go to the resource commission, because it isn't an HRO overlay, and a modification to the exterior is what we're proposing here, and we're, you know, that comfortable with that. Um, not specifically relevant to this board, and this board's decision, I don't believe, but it is worth pointing out, uh, I dropped down there in my suit before I came out here, and I opened that, or that stairwell, knocked that in, and opened the, uh, went down to the basement and, and, uh, knocked at the, the masonry there, and was able to see that it very much appears that at some point there was a stairwell there, you could see actually fresh concrete, had, was put in, and then, um, I, I just went, like I said, I went down there right for me, so I didn't include those photos, but I'm not particularly worried about getting that approval from, uh, historic resources. And another option would be, if they are concerned about the historic nature of the property, um, we could possibly put the entrance on the side where there's a driveway wide length, um, on the west side of the property. So those would be some of the options for, we may come back to you after, after going in front of them, uh, with a slightly different plan in terms of the entrance. We also could, there's an existing interior stairwell, um, that appears to me code, so it's possible to entirely avoid historic resources potentially, but, you know, we'd rather do this right, and I think that a tenant would prefer to enter, um, through, you know, a wider, newer entrance where they can more easily get a full, uh, full, uh, inside bed and couch into their apartment, if you just, it's, it's preferable, it's worth the effort for this property to, to do it right, so, um, that's pretty much what, what we're looking at here. Um, now, I, I know we've all read this already, I'm sure before, uh, this meeting, but just pointed the main highlights of, of why we need the criteria, you know, the building will be ten percent above finished grade, along the front of the building. Um, we incorporate in a closed area outside of a public right of way, so that trash will be stored, you know, uh, in the rear or on the side of the box, behind the fence, on the side. Um, I will, I would actually, that's probably worth speaking to, this is a slightly different neighborhood than the last time we were in front of the Park South, there's a different housing stock. I live around the corner, uh, five buildings away, at one eighty-fourth South Swan. And, uh, there, Merle and Irving and Swan, even those three streets have, from street to street, very different housing stock. Putting aside the huge, uh, multifamily development, the long energy building. Um, going up Merle, you have mostly one and two family homes. And Irving is primarily two and three. Swan is also mostly a mix of two and three. Uh, I kind of did an inventory of how many three families were in the area, and there was a substantial amount, so this wouldn't be on a territory in the neighborhood. But I think it's worth pointing out that around sixty percent or more of the inventory is one or two family. Um, somewhere less than twenty percent is three family. And, uh, it's like twenty percent or so is vacant land. So moving this into a three-family would actually better balance the residential townhouse district that this is in. Um, the goal of the R T D is it being to be a mix of two and three family properties. So now this would actually move in in that direction. It's also worth pointing out that these buildings are, some to fifteen and twenty percent taller than any of the other buildings on Merle, again, long energy notwithstanding. Um, so if you go up Merle Avenue to Delaware Ave before you exit in the neighborhood, the vast, vast, vast majority of those properties do not appear to meet the criteria that's necessary to be fifty percent above grade. So I don't think you'd be opening the door to a slew of other properties on Merle, in particular, applying for, uh, you know, garden level apartments, because it just doesn't look like the housing stock meets that criteria, but that's his conjecture, that's just my opinion, looking at them. Um, yeah, there's some of the other properties, um, on Irving and Swan, um, the bulk of those are on Irving, uh, which are more similar to this, this type of building, of which there are three others on this corner that are all pretty identical. Um, I think that's pretty much it on our end of things. Um, we did have, uh, some written comments, uh, this went very quickly, so we reached out, I had a great conversation with, uh, the Comcast member, um, Sergio Adams about this, uh, didn't have time to put anything together. Uh, Mr. Chu, uh, thanks for comments, uh, he now owns, tagged up the part of the office. Do I have any easy time? Okay, hold up. Can we share a really good comment, staff, some? We, we did. Okay, yeah. There was, uh, there was one big comment that had some negative points, happy to address those, but it's okay, we don't have time. Any questions from the board?
Um, I do have a question. Did you have, um, as you were checking me out, I was gonna try to call in the area. There was a lot of tall buildings that would have to be moved in. Um, not really, like, this restoring apartments versus this is, oh, I have a better term, uh, irregular-sized building. Did you see how many have basement apartments, like, that you're offering in that area? I don't recall many, but I want to.
Great question. Um, so on Irving Street, where the building stock is similar height to, to one sixty-seven, which is this, and then like one sixty-nine, and one sixty-five, those two properties. Uh, as I pointed out on Irving Street, about half of that, somewhere between a third and a half, and a garden level, I think it's right on the outer corner of Irving. Uh, on Merle, where the building stock, as you go up Merle, away from this property, is a little bit shorter, you have not, they're two and a half, but there isn't a true half level there. They're looking at the basement windows are, like, down here. Um, very, very few, I couldn't find a single one on Merle that has a garden level apartment. Upper Merle, as you're going west. Yes. Up towards the price shop. When you go past the price shop, you're in Park South, and that housing stock is totally different. Yeah. Completely. And a different zoning district as well, that's, that turns into, I think, a part two for a lot of, a lot of Merle, and you're going up that way. Not for me as well, um, we need to defer on this one, so there's not really a look for us to take, so I want to pass it to the staff to, uh, give, give, give us their analysis and notes that are necessary. Circle back.
Sure, so the applicants touched on a lot of those, uh, concerns that we had. Um, they do have to go in front of the, uh, historic resources committee for the, um, entry for the door, for any work to do, because they're in the historic resources overlay district. Um, so that would have to be, uh, addressed prior to any approvals from us at the planning board. Um, there, the one thing that we wanted to call out was, uh, if the board would consider that an approved conversion would also incentivize, uh, a conversion of similar, uh, like structures along the block. Um, however, that could fiscally, um, sustain maintenance of these properties. There was a property that was demolished due to, um, lack, uh, to neglect and being vacant for a long time. Um, the applicant was also correct that there, the purpose of this zoning district just has to have a balance of the two and a three. This block, uh, and close to it are more two units. Um, there, there is a difference in height and space, but not all garden level apartments have that above grade, uh, fifty percent above grade requirement, um, that the conversion requires of the change.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, once our meeting has been, we have this, this action on, no.
Inside of the.
And the building, they would do, uh, for five hundred more. Four hundred feet allow, each of the, uh, two, four-story apartment, probably two hundred thirty-three thousand. You have this four square feet of concrete. Very short. And. Eighty-five. Hundred eighty-five.
Hundred eighty-five. No.
Right, remember those. After one day, definitely. And again, this is, this is a little bit of, today, but please continue the conversation for me. On the side, it is honorable, uh, next slide. It's most, it's most important, uh, you have my, I'll see on the green light. There you go. Yeah. Okay. It's almost people, you're now, this is a site of the, uh, not vacant. Well, uh, most points, yes. And I have also a comment, but don't present, please, thank you. If let's, if we walk through, as we're walking through, I will, but, um, we're on this, like, show scary photos of the existing building, um, on that floor. Um, going through this, the site restoration plan, the proposed, like, um, proposed site restoration plans, and sort of proposal you do in terms of overall restoration site, uh, the whole site plan, uh, additional changes that, uh, which was. So we, we've added a couple, uh, entries to the, since the last time we seen this, we had a couple of years before, first time. Because of the grade on the street, we have to have ramps associated with, right, ramps, it's there, it's always each entry, so the one you're actually on the street, obviously, that three, now you're going up the street now. We've also increased the, uh, if you're, uh, in terms of our recreation space, we increased the size of the playground, four hundred percent. And, uh, increased the size of, and if you go from the outside, maybe up there, when you have a couple of smaller recreation spaces. Next slide.
One over, so this slide here gives an overview of site, uh, the relation in contact, the sound, uh, the here, the scale, uh, the size relative to its neighbors, and just how the site looks, so, across the street, and how it looks. I think some of the things that are just highlighting our goal here is going to take the site more, that should, probably, uh, the side. Maybe it more will be able to put, like, you, um, or you see that exterior shot of the building, that way, nine and a quarter. Um, and that sort of shows of how that will work. They're kind of, you know, succeed, uh, there's a, lower on the floor, uh, a lot of, maybe, if you have, browder, like, uh, like, three. Next slide, so on the next slide, what we're showing is, uh, this gave length of construction, uh, we want, uh, sure, fund sources, um, home funds, what's on, uh, price, uh, and a very specific, uh, M I H P, uh, the F H P, and, uh, this. And, uh, on the, the side there, we have a, ultimately, um, we'll actually be on the news, it was a crime. Again, this is a substantial portion.
Better people than entry, we had, this is only showing one building. Both buildings have similar entries. We had a lot of trends of building. In some locations, they were part of the. There is, there is more of a, uh, made the brick, similar corners of our site. Uh, so if you want, just the right, just the left entry, the brick goes up to that window, so it's just a problem, it doesn't show up. So you can see there, it's a way to create a sign. There's also a brick base below this great sign.
And then we can go to the next slide, so the next slide over what we're showing here is, we've got some feedback concerns about, recreational space, not enough space. Uh, there are coming, if you go down to the circle area, which they run on, increasing percentage of sand, which should have areas as well. An additional bench is added to the south and west corners, and also what you'll notice is that we have a little walk through. Triller that you want around to, uh, which hopefully connects to the back of the pedestrian, or pedestrian. Connect the, the old name and see your period. Or on the site. So I took, so we can do a cleaner version.
So this slide, this slide has the recreation area that highlighted, oh, dash line. Using the definition of the city ads, and also through some. This shows the actual site area, that's two hundred seventy-one thousand change. And the recreation spaces for thirty-nine thousand. Then it's all broken down, they also have to, uh, our park parking spaces.
So if you go through the building, it doesn't really, if we go through these buildings, uh, we have a lot of indoor play must get in the room, on the west side, it's pretty much fifteen minutes. Um, between these two left outdoors states, out for lookability space, and the kind of, this is around thirty-four, crazy town, this is. Parking spaces, um, and also some, you know, trying to, um, I think, uh, mention of, ninety-four park, bike parking, it's going to propose spaces where, um, we also have some interior bike parking. We're doing the next slide. We heard staff was assembling, you know, enough aviation first floor and upper floor levels, so our response that, we believe that we eventually kind of provide and turn the first. And sort of alternating those colors inside and bottom. So these items can see on the slides, and we also heard through the areas, immediate spaces. What we did in that case.
This, this slide actually does. The increased window size. As far as the combination. Well, they're the same color as the current site. We've also had it on four turntables. And you can see about the main entry on the street side of the upper. Or there, uh, increase the new space. As well as on the next elevation.
Next slide. So this slide shows more of what we're. These are the spaces people can be able to look out. In the community, um, and then our definition. Um, and we're also showing you how the manager, or of one, right? Let's do the next slide over.
Those just show the second. Thank you much, uh, before we do, my board remarks, I'd like to do, uh, both of them to speak to the public, so. You can go just, I think first off.
Right before the meeting.
Oh, one second. Our, our role is what, three minutes for, probably six minutes for legislative officials?
Yes.
I'm not going to let the official. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Um, so good evening, Ms. Relus, the planning board, I'm here again this evening to provide comments for our, housing project, if I probably was a little far here in Albany, and I once again represent the owners and residents of, which is located in North, will be less than two hundred. Uh, we attended in Cameron's at the first hearing in May, on this project, and we expressed a serious concern about the size, the design, and scope of the proposed housing development. Uh, since then, there's been two late form or neighborhood meetings, where a presentation was made by local representatives. And at those meetings, we have mentioned, we've been laughing, but we really don't believe we've heard. Apart from the few modifications we saw this evening, mostly, none of the elements would, would be expressed, considered, or would be proposed alternatives that they made a consideration. We made three requests to cover more information regarding the successful housing project, and it has structured it of similar size, design, and scope, as they have proposed by the Boulevard, to date, and that was a huge information. I want to be clear on this point, it's not opposed to housing development access. We are strongly opposed to this. Last week I sent a field letter on the handle of the three more, some red, and our concerns, I don't know if you can just read it across the heart path. I won't read it now, rather I do want to have size, three main concerns. First, the size, the large scale of this project was one hundred eighty-five apartments, and the average of one hundred forty-four apartments basement. Potentially several hundred across kind of a full overwhelm. Of particular knowing the land depth of the post is in the front of twelve, uh, we live, that's two hundred fifty, away, we're very moved with, and despite the results of Conover's traffic study, any of us familiar with friends, ever been on the Boulevard, Shakerolo, intersection, so many, and so the, development needs problematicity, cross park and hospitals, and established, and both motherhood, should approach. Already tested. Second, the design, this development consists of two whole, large, floor style, boxy structure buildings, fundamentally, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, and our opinion is this is. Third, the scope, this project presented whole, the numbers, concentration of affordable housing, and the best plan, in creating a whole construction of low income communities. Despite community feedback and surrender and offensive consideration for proposals, and probably demonstrate it's played off of that change. In terms of size, design, and scope, you would acknowledge for the project, which is quite a high volume asset. Conover has not been a good meeting partner. We submitted the minutes of all presidents of, of the proposed project, and the surrounding community, with better service, and honor, smaller, equal friendly, yes, his development, great, enjoying five. Once again, we are closed project zero, zero, five, two, five, and present one. Some of those are on the board to recommend on the year to provide this project, every nineteen thirteen, with all of them.
Thank you very much.
You received my written comments, correct?
Correct.
I also did comments from May that I didn't notice in the meeting, I know people had, so they watched the video, but I did in the hard time.
We have three minutes, you're ready when you are.
Good evening, everybody, and I very much appreciate your kind of consideration to be able to speak today. Um, I do want to share that I am speaking out on the, uh, three more car, sorry, at the, um, five hundred and more, more than four hundred and five, number zero, zero, five, two, five. In reference, I'm normally posted in the project, and certainly is presently presented to us. I previously had sent out a letter on my husband's, on May twenty-eighth. I was hoping to attend tonight's meeting and present some comments to the city board by your word personally. In essence, I'm hoping that by showing that, if you could associate me, that perhaps you did not want it recently, or never know. I hope my husband and I, is it wrong expenses to know this in the area? About some of the opposition, and with some concerns that we believe are achieving shortcomings of this particular project. There is some good news, though, we believe that all of these issues are weak bits, and not a piece to the housing project, or housing building sector. Very much, very much now. I think it's important for me to share with you that I'm not a new resident to our capital city. I've lived in this area since I was ten years old, unfortunately, or that's unfortunately, that was fifty-six years ago. Which, yes, for that is all correct, I'm now a new woman, elementary school student here in this area, but as a senior citizen. I mention this because I spent all of my youth and adulthood here. I got married here in Albany, for New York, I worked for the United States government for thirty-seven years, a wonderful career, which I was very grateful for. And I was fortunate, all of it is in this capital city. I'm blessed to now be enjoying the time, and made the decision four years ago to move from a home that I shared with my three children, almost all of which during that time was as a single mom and three daughters. This was to be my new chapter, I used my savings in the sale of my mother to purchase a condominium located only a couple miles from where I once worked, in this city's capital. I mentioned all of this today because it grounds my comments here. I'm not a newcomer to this city, and certainly not a company that has moved in cities far west and east of Albany. A citizen with deep roots and a shared sense of community, a longstanding love for our capital city. I have to remember, I feel very strongly that we could invest in planning a much more modern and equal friendly mixed use development. It could be greatly enjoyed and very viable from high middle and low income families. From the other architectural drawings that were presented, we're concerned that there does need to be more adequate planning fees for children, more green space amenities, including more small shopping, college facilities, and more big telephones by residents, which pressure me, there is next to none. You know that there's a number of significant parking spaces planned, and actually, there was a one sixty eight, and today we heard one eighty-four, so we picture with reason. Again, this is an area that does have a lot of bus lanes, and it was, it seems that it's a perfect place, going backwards. If I could, one of the areas that I would consider going with, and say finance and budget, it was on housing related issues for the state of New York. This is going back thirty-five years ago. This is very much old fashioned design, and I don't mean that in a good sense, we can do better, I'm going, and I think our city deserves better, that's really what I want to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Wait, we have one additional speaker?
Rose Miller?
Rose Miller. She online?
No, then she's not here.
All righty, um, board members, any questions for any of our presenters?
I'm not necessarily, no, it's a question, um. My concern is, well, here's my first question, because before, and I hate to stand in the way. Um, before in looking at your drawing here. The entryways were on the, were facing. And so now the entryway, you're just, you just footed.
We, we had an entrance inside, the only, that, look at this, the only clear, done is that exit entrance is here.
So we're just looking entryways on the inside?
Yes.
That was a good. Okay, okay, and so, you know, my next question to you is, the apartments are kind of there. Is there a middle hallway, or is there a side hallway, this side, and then the hallway? How was that? Got it. Okay. Okay, um, I'll just address the question, that's how we all need to, because again, my issue with that, with this two, I'm just gonna say that. I mean, these two, right here, closes off, more in here, so if there's a fire, if there's a leak, they're not going to be able to see what's going on here, it's a fraction of the center, which is the safety issue. But the leak is never gonna happen, is it?
But we definitely could do one.
Okay.
So that, that does work.
So that that does work.
Okay.
I'm also curious. Uh does it show?
Well, yeah, that's cool, but I'm talking about my own site. So when you have something. They actually here. That's my concern.
It's here. We're always constantly.
We all have been.
So here's a question, have you guys seen this? So you have three, one, two, three. And then that way, in the terminal right here. That way it solves that I can't see what's going on in here, it's not in here.
I would defer to the person who wrote that, because this is a video, because I don't know. If that's cold and. The things that go off that's set back, so. It doesn't have to be, I think it said all of that property, and I believe people wants to have properties of the park industry. And have those those in. During this term. Um and then regardless of parking, that department goes to the. To the rear side of the.
But it is, but it is a possibility, but the way you. It's not.
Yeah, you believe that we would be if there were other reasons. Um but it's not suitable located behind buildings and.
Well, in our last conversation, you say that for, because I would. Um especially like who's this back? That way we have a larger site and can see inside. You're saying that because of the slope, that would be extremely hard to do. So now when I'm saying, okay, you can't put it out here, why not put it in the middle, now we have a. And on the side in between the buildings. Go to see some configuration. That way it wasn't, it alleviates the having to put something here because of the. Cost to shore something of of a. But also it's really the safety issue here. This being closed off, I mean, is a big issue. Because all I'm saying is that people don't know what they're getting into, so they do. I understand cameras, I understand all of that. But you know, you know, a police, a police person have a camera. And they don't have, you know what I mean, this, that's just my thing, so.
We've answered maybe the problem with the motel that's there for, all their criminal activity in fact, no. The one thing we were unable to do was, you know, if this is the code. We're probably trying to do what's the code. Is move the parking and put parking that. Where were you parking?
What are you saying that you can apply for?
People are saying it's. Permanently as we would. Develop a site where you, where you're there. It's substantially in front of. Would require a. But it's also hard to say who that's you.
Right, and you can start even just cutting some of the building. Here, you know, and you. It is just this narrow wall. It's the same. Because if you're looking at it from here. I don't see, I can't see in in there from here, I can't see in there from here. I can't see any, and these are only ingress and egress, I can't see from this. There's no way you can see and what's going on here.
So just put it where you want to know, that is the sixteen.
No, I understand that, and you have to have that. Our focus concern for fire, because the fire truck need to be turned in, they need to be able to.
You can um. Get down there and answer, so I don't.
Yeah, sorry.
Um I would say.
I can pull that. I can put that on.
I think that, I think that drawing, uh that's your drawing is on. Oh, that's that's. So yeah, that that area is. Is pretty. Pretty big. The way you think or I I don't know.
I said, and that's it, my issue is that I keep that buildings blocking the wider site, each of this having the. Of your, of your property. And so, and that's the safety concern, the safety concern, and also being the threat. Here, by what part of the community who live there?
So one of the, one of the things we've had to deal with. Yeah. So as much as we can change into the site, um you know, setbacks and the building is certainly. Are just the relations to be. The reason why we're presented as. And here, of course, to be honest. I think can be. So we're not having to do. To uh here. Um or what we can do. Just wanted to see. Correct, but um it's not like I see. More any questions? Staff, any comment? Did the public make any work come? Public is, we asked the public to. Sign up prior to the meeting, all folks have had. And given complete comment, this is not just what we're back before. Um what I wouldn't hear is I'm trying to use the discussion. Regardless of the outcome of the previous study. The. It's common for there to be. Conversations, sometimes the intention was about. Projects that are being proposed. Um those that are seemingly most set for. Uh for those that despite the intentions of the conversation that continue. Our job tonight is not to approve. The project, either demolition or development plan. Uh tonight's job is that things for requiring. The planning board, the planning department has to be able to see. So then, just to know that this will be on the agenda again. And um. I think that that's the main point for tonight, I think what we need to hear from both of us. Comments that are written, are raised, they are part of the. Let's say, feel Jack. They're part of the. They're a part of the file, they're publicly um available. But um I don't, I don't want to get tonight into back, back and forth. Uh here in this forum, we'll soon adjourn and the public. Uh immediately following the, which I'm pretty good as well, so we manage that. That's my opinion, so staff, has anything to add before we take the uh sequelo? General topic, we're still waiting, uh. Part of some of the plans, we have gotten some already, we've received some revisions. Uh regarding that, so I kind of where we're going to do the additional revisions. We have, we've got some like apartment comments and. Uh still we have some. Uh traffic, uh more information generally. Down at this point, if not there to be, uh any significant. Impacts uh for the environment, especially regarding um. Water retention, things like that. Um and what we're looking for tonight, as I said, is that we. Um that we're. Thank you, Ali, um. Having no additional comments, is there a motion to? Declare the planning department as a leading agency for. Move is taken to declare the planning department as the agency for SEGRA. All in favor, say aye, aye. Next step. We will return. To the details, I certainly, as I said last time. Really appreciate um all who participate, not only in the discussion on this project, but. All that come before the board. This work is pretty important, so put this all, everybody talking about across city, moving across country. Uh housing is, it's been called dirt right now and. Uh let's work together as a community to figure out. Some solution, alright? So without further ado, is there a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting? All in favor? Alright. Excited, thank you.
Yes.
This was.
This is for today. Thank you.
Just for the sequel, we just did.
The, no, 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 yeah. The the revolution. Thank you.
The big thing that signed with the mark of the sequel, that was. We don't.